We could submit it, so we did that. And then in the second review, we actually did two sort of interim submittals, one in August and one in September. And, you know, we were turning around deadlines really, really fast. And technically, all of those reviews happened between the July submittal and the certification deadline for that or the findings letter deadline for that is September 17th. So we did, we did a lot of work in that time period this summer to get to our conditional certification letter on September 17th. I will say we are not alone in going through this process past the deadline. I was just on a call with the League of California Cities last week and where they pointed out that there's still 142 jurisdictions in California that are not in compliance with their, with the state housing element law. There were also some really unfortunate occurrences during our, our process, such as Dave Barquist from Kimley Horn, who was our project director on this, unfortunately and unexpectedly passed away between the first and second submittals. So he was just a wonderful guy, a great planner, loving father and friend, who some of us have known. My coworker, Justin Meeks, has known him for many, many years. And he's just someone who was a great person who's going to be greatly missed. So that was, you know, just a big development in, in this cycle as well. I will point out that tonight we also have several representatives from Kimley Horn here. So behind me, we have Inez Galmish and Bryant De La Torre from Kimley Horn, who have helped get us over the finish line with this. We also had some very invaluable assistance from Mary Wagner from BWS, our city attorney's office, who is also here tonight, serving as city attorney. And with that, I think we can get into this. So what I'm going to go over tonight is just a basic overview. You know, it's a 400-page document. We're not going to go through that page by page. So it's going to involve just a quick overview of chapter one, the introduction, chapter two, which is really the, the meat of the, of the plan with all the programs and everything. And then the appendices, which is where you're going to see kind of, if you looked at the document, that's where all the work is, all the analysis, all the numbers. And then talk a little bit about just next steps. So really high level, the housing elements is a tool for planning and accommodating current and future housing growth within the next eight-year period. And that eight-year period goes from 2023 to 2031. It's one of the seven state-mandated elements in the Watsonville general plan. As I mentioned, we're supposed to update it every eight-year in, in cycles. So the last was the fifth cycle and this is the sixth cycle. And the plan contains detailed goals, policies, objectives for the protection, improvement, and production of housing. So chapter one goes over a couple of items. It covers the state requirements, which are basically just to ensure that every resident has access to housing and a suitable living environment. It also covers the regional housing needs allocation, or RENA. That's the methodology used for determining future housing need by income category, which I'll show you later, throughout the state, based on growth in population, households, and employment. It also goes into kind of the relationship between housing and the other general plan elements, because obviously none of these are standalone, they're all intertwined in, you know, in, in how a community functions. It covers the public participation that the city went through in creating the plan and also talks a little bit about the data sources that were used for the research and analysis. And in terms of the housing organization, there's a chapter one, a chapter two, and then A through H of appendices. So here is the regional housing needs allocation for the city of Watsonville in the sixth cycle. As you can see, it's 2,053 total housing units, split up by income category, very low, low, moderate, and above moderate. Basically, all RENA numbers were adjusted upwards for every jurisdiction during the cycle due to existing shortages of housing, lack of current housing production, and projected shortfall based on population growth estimates. Within our county here, Watsonville went from 700 units in the fifth cycle to 2,053, 193% increase. Capitola actually went from 143 to 1,336, an 834% increase. City of Santa Cruz went from 747 to 3,736, or a 400% increase. And the county of Santa Cruz went from 1,314 to 4,634 for a 253% increase. You'll notice there's a lot of disparity between the amount of the increase. And a lot of that was that the new methodology for this cycle for allocating units was updated based on factors like past performance by income level. So because, you'll note that because we have a lower number, that corresponds to the fact that we've actually done a pretty good job of producing housing and more importantly, affordable housing over the last cycle. Because we produced more housing in the last eight years as well, and almost if certain developments had come through, we actually would have met our RENA target, our split between very low, low, and moderate and above moderate is almost an even 50/50. It's 48/52. If you look at Capitola, which only produced four, sorry, 12 affordable housing units in the last 20 years, they were assigned a higher percentage of affordable units because they haven't produced any. So their split was 66% very low, low, moderate, and 34% above moderate. So just fun to point out. So in terms of public participation, we did hold four public outreach meetings between February and April of 2023. We held a joint Planning Commission and City Council study session on September 26, 2023, which some of you attended. There were also three public review periods, which I mentioned earlier, related to the draft housing element submittals in December 2023, July 2024, and September 2024. And I will say, we got a decent amount of comments on the first round of public review and then less through each review. And the last one, I believe, we only got one comment, and it was essentially just praising the job we'd done incorporating programs that were of interest. So in terms of the different parts of the housing element that, that I'm going to review tonight, the most important ones are going to be chapter two, because as I mentioned, that's all of the programs, which are going to dictate kind of what we do over the next eight-year cycle. And then appendix E, which is the affirmatively furthering fair housing, which is a new requirement for the cycle that gets in, I'll describe it a little bit later, but it's an important new addition. And then appendix F, which is the sites analysis, which is really the meat of where we expect housing to occur in the next eight years. So the main goals for our housing plan are shown here. I'm not going to read through them one by one. But each one has between four and eight supporting policies, and they're all about the things I mentioned earlier, such as, you know, protecting existing affordable housing and housing stock, producing new housing, and ensuring the fair opportunity of everyone in the community to access housing. And here's just a breakdown of the four programs that are required in your housing plan. So housing and neighborhood conservation, provision of housing assistance, housing production, removal of governmental constraints, and equal housing opportunity. And I'm going to go through a few of the programs that are just of note. I'm going to talk about a couple at the end that are, that were sort of the most important at the end of our review process. But program A6 is displacement protection, which is something that you'll notice with each one of these, there's goals of when you want to adopt new policies and programs. So that with this one, for example, you know, apply for at least one grant per year, present anti-displacement options to city council by December 26, 2026, with the goal of adopting some policies or programs by December 2027. That's an example kind of of how you structure the timeline for each of these programs. We're also going to explore additional residential opportunity sites. So some of that has to do with commercial areas. There's a table at the very end of appendix F that identifies commercial sites that were not included in this cycle but could potentially have additional residential units under a lot of the new emerging state laws that allow residential units in commercial areas. There's also some programs related to transitional and emergency shelters, as well as supportive housing. Low barrier navigation centers, which of course is a topic of interest right now. There's processes for adopting local standards and procedures for processing state-mandated applications, like these SB 35 applications. So that was one of the ones that's on our list. There's also some interesting ones like the Surplus Lands Act, which is where the state's requiring us to declare that city-owned sites are surplus and then approving a resolution making findings that the, those sites will be put out to competitive bid for development by the end of 2026. So things like that are going to be very interesting to see how they play out. There's also updates to the design review process, such as doing objective development standards for the entire city. We just did them in the downtown specific plan area, but we're also going to do those for the entire city. There's also the removal of development constraints for affordable housing. One of the things that HCD looked at was the parking requirements for multifamily housing and wanting to make sure that that was not going to be a constraint or an impediment to housing development. So that's one of the things we're going to look at. And then the last two, big two here are the program D8, which is to require residential, 50% residential use in the downtown central core area on sites that were identified in our site inventory for the sixth cycle. And building height limits, which I'll get into in just a second. But that would involve adopting an amendment to the downtown Watsonville specific plan, increasing height limits for the downtown neighborhood and downtown industrial zoning districts to six stories from four, and for the downtown core district from six to eight stories by January 2027. We are asking for additional authorization to make two changes to the final draft before we submit to HCD. One of them is this D8, and this is just a language cleanup. In the final draft that we had for our conditional certification, we had had it listed as permit 50% rather than require, and this is a state requirement. So we went through and just changed a little bit of the language just to reflect the fact that this is not optional or, you know, something that's, someone can choose to take advantage of that they will be required to do 50% residential use on the sites identified in the downtown sites inventory. And then the bigger one, which was the very last sticking point of our discussions with HCD, was the building height limits. So essentially, you know, we adopted the downtown specific plan. It's got a very high density for both the downtown neighborhood and the downtown core zoning districts. But HCD wasn't comfortable with the idea that those densities could be accommodated with four- and six-story height limits. So after our, I guess, second interim submittal, staff really put a lot of work into providing justification for why we thought the four- and six-story height limits would work. And involved in that was providing a detailed description of the engagement with nonprofit and for-profit developers that was included in crafting the downtown specific plan, because as I mentioned, that was a two-year process where there was a lot of public input from the development community about what would work. And we did include that in the plan. There was also an individual testimonial from a nonprofit housing developer that four- and six-story height limits are not a constraint on the housing development. We also provided a local example of the project at 445 Main Street Downtown that was completed, that was able to provide 101 dwelling units per acre in a four-story building. And then we, I took a look at the downtown Santa Cruz area, which is, as you know, just overflowing with development right now, to see what their housing developments looked like. And basically, we put together a table that showed all the projects that are at or above the 85 dwelling unit per acre and 125 dwelling unit per acre downtown Watsonville specific plan densities that also fall into the four- and six-story height range. And there were six or seven projects that fit into that. And then we also mocked up two hypothetical project examples, demonstrating how those densities could be achieved at the four- and six-story height limits, one on a one-acre redevelopment site and one on a two-acre redevelopment site. Despite all of that, HCD still just felt that it couldn't be done and said that we needed to increase our height limits. So they didn't provide any evidence or justification demonstrating why those wouldn't work. But, you know, we're getting to a point where we needed to get to certification so that we're not subject to builder's remedy anymore. And so we worked some, worked on some language, shown on the slide here, on the slide here, that would allow the city as part of program D13 in the future to take a look at our downtown Watsonville specific plan and potentially adjust the height limits up to a maximum of six stories for downtown neighborhood and downtown industrial and up to a maximum of eight stories in the downtown core zoning district. So as I mentioned, there's also, you know, appendices A through H. There's a review of past performance, which looks at, you know, how we did in the fifth cycle. There's a housing needs assessment, kind of looking at where we are today, because obviously things have changed since the fifth cycle analysis was done. There's an overview of the housing resources we currently have in the community, which things may be housing constraints, whether that be, you know, the zoning regulations or, you know, parking requirements, urban limit lines. You know, there's lots of different things that could constrain housing development within a city, as well as the fair housing analysis, which I'll get into in just a second. The sites analysis, which is the, the map and table with all of the sites we've identified as being potentially developed in the next eight years to meet that 2,053 target. Summary of community outreach, and then a glossary of terms. So I mentioned that appendix E is the new affirmatively furthering fair housing analysis. So this was beginning in January 1, 2019. There was a new requirement that all California jurisdictions ensure that laws, programs, activities affirmatively further fair housing. And what that means for our housing element is that we, it must contain an assessment of the AFFH, consistent with the core elements of that analysis required by AFFH. What fair housing means is it's a condition in which individuals of similar income levels in the same housing market have like ranges of choices available to them regardless of race, color, ancestry, national origin, age, religion, sex, disability, marital status, familial status, source of income, sexual orientation, or any other arbitrary factor. What, what essentially getting at is it was the state looking to correct any local history of segregation, redlining, anything like that within each city's city limits with kind of a one-size-fits-all approach that didn't necessarily apply to everyone, but, you know, it was a wide net cast to try to fix a historic wrong. So what we found through our fair housing analysis was that basically none of the conditions they were looking for as part of this really exist within the Watsonville city limits. All of, in terms of resource levels, all of Watsonville is categorized as a low-resource area. In terms of patterns of integration and segregation, almost all of Watsonville is either mostly Latinx or Latinx white with no demonstrable segregation. In terms of diversity, we ended up at the, the higher diversity end of the spectrum. We did not have any racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty, and we didn't have any racially concentrated areas of affluence in Watsonville either. And here's a couple of maps alluding to those things. So the, the recap is the ethnically, racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty. And as you can see, there's none, there's no hashed areas within our city limits. And then the RCAA is the racially concentrated areas of affluence. And as you can see, the closest areas, up closer to kind of the, heading towards Aptos area. This is a map of all of our housing element site inventory sites. So.
Councilmember Clark.
A Clark?
Dutra, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I can't even think after that one.
My apologies.
What, I'm confused, I don't really understand this.
So if, if you look at the left-hand image, this, well, actually, the right will be a better example here. So a hashed area, so this, the hashing here for RCAA, as you see this area north, northwest of town here, is that area. In the image on the left, the hashed area would be red, but there are none within the, the scope of, you know, where this image, image shows. So the nearest areas that actually fall into those categories are Aptos, Gilroy, and Salinas. So.
For affluency.
For?
Affluent.
Yeah, for, for both. The one on the left is the racially or ethnically concentrated areas of poverty. And then the one on the right is racially concentrated areas of affluence. So poverty and affluence.
Where would be the closest poverty?
That's the one on the left. I believe that one was Gilroy and Salinas. And then I'll show this again. This is the, the RENA, the RENA table with the breakdown by income category. And then this is the full table that really gets into this in the kind of minutia. You'll notice here that there's a buffer. So we actually went above the 2,053 units for a total potential development capacity of 2,638 units. And that's because HCD recommends that you provide a buffer to make sure that, you know, you can meet the targets that they have assigned. So for each category, we had, you know, a buffer of 16% for lower income, 70% for modern income, 40% for above moderate, for an average overall of 28%. And that met the HCD guidance on that. You'll also notice that, you know, there, there really aren't a lot of existing zoning on vacant sites listed. And that's because we really don't have a lot of vacant land that are zoned for residential purposes that can provide units, which is why we were very lucky to have the recently adopted downtown Watsonville specific plan, providing, you know, a potential development capacity of up to 4,000 units to be able to draw from for this project. There's also the projects in the pipeline, and that's going to include some of the ongoing development projects, like Sunshine Gardens and Hillcrest Estates. So those are ones that are partially under construction but have not been fully counted towards the fifth-cycle arena. So those are actually going to count towards our sixth cycle instead because they didn't, they weren't constructed in time. Trying to think, oh, and, and just a side note, we just actually approved 23 more of our units on the October 1st Planning Commission meeting with the Habitat for Humanity subdivision and the Evans Circle subdivision, which you will all be seeing next Tuesday as well for their subdivision maps. So, so we're, we're well on our way. And then this is the, the map of all sites that were selected. So the map on the right shows all of the sites in the city, and that includes the pipeline projects I mentioned. As you see, the big, the two large pink blocks there would be the Sunshine Gardens and Hillcrest Estates here. The fifth-cycle parcels, which are ones that were identified in the fifth-cycle element but were not developed, and so those now get development by right. So those are the ones in green. Existing zoning vacant parcels, there's really just this one little strip here that I'm pointing to with my cursor, so not a lot of those. And then there's the downtown Watsonville specific plan area, which is shown in yellow here. And most of those are non-vacant sites. So we had to do additional analysis to justify that they would develop in the next eight years or that they had a high percentage chance of developing in the next eight years. And they are, as you can see, are kind of clustered throughout the downtown. So in terms of next steps, you know, once the city adopts the general plan amendment, replacing the fifth-cycle housing element with the sixth-cycle housing element, the city's consultants can submit the draft of our sixth-cycle housing element to HCD for final certification. They get another 60-day review period, so hopefully they don't need all that now that they know we're, you know, pretty much there. But they do have that wiggle room if they need it. And with that, staff would recommend that the city council approve a resolution adopting a general plan amendment to include the California Department of Housing and Community Development approved 2023 to 2031 six-cycle housing element in the 2005 City of Watsonville general plan and finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under sections 15262, 15283, and 15061B3 of the state's SEQA guidelines. And I'm happy to answer any questions or discuss this further.
Questions from council? Councilmember Dutra?
Thank you, I'll turn this on this time. I just have a few questions. I'd like to talk about the parking. And if, did I understand? So on some of these projects, if they are exempt from, like, let's say they're like low-income projects, are we saying that there's going to be an exemption from parking requirements? Is that what I understood?
The, the program that was related to development standards was talking about reviewing the multifamily parking requirements throughout the city for any multifamily structures. So for example, in certain areas like the downtown Watsonville specific plan area, they've already lowered the parking standards. They dropped it down to 1.6 spaces and 0.8 spaces, which are actually lower than even the state density bonus requirements. But throughout the rest of the city, there's a higher parking requirement, which they consider, they being HCD, considered to potentially be an impediment or constraint to development. So they'd like us to take a look at that and see if we could maybe drop it a little bit lower to encourage more multifamily housing development. But that's not something that's being adopted tonight. That's something that will be explored under that program.
Right, yeah, and I just, I think that we need to be careful because I know that maybe the city has a, has a view and maybe some of us have different views on that because we hear from the people that are complaining about parking all the time. And so if we keep on lowering the requirements, because it's, not everybody has the luxury of being in a house with just, you know, two people. A lot of homes have multiple people in them, and that means that multiple cars come with them. So if we continue to reduce the parking requirements, then, you know, it, it really makes it difficult for our community members to, to park. So as that conversation goes on, I'm glad that you said that we're still going to be talking about it because I think we definitely need to. I do know that a lot of the, the requirements when it comes to low-income housing is, we don't have to do like a environmental review, right? We don't have to do a traffic study. And so I just want to make sure that as we're moving forward, that everything is being taken into consideration because we are growing as a city and the population is increasing. And people are, I mean, we're, we're, we're living on an infrastructure that was built decades and decades and decades ago, and it does not work for today. So please keep that in consideration as we move forward. My other question is, I thought we, the original plan, I thought we were going to seven floors, but it sounds like you said we're going to eight floors now, which I do support just because I was talking to a developer yesterday, and they were telling me that it really doesn't start panning out, penciling out until about the eighth floor. So that's why some people stay at four floors. And so I think that was a smart decision, especially downtown. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, we're currently at six, and they, they recommended looking into potentially raising it to eight.
Yeah, I, I think that's a good idea, especially downtown. I mean, this is, so, but, which means that people are going to be holding off on projects for another few years if they, this doesn't go into effect until 2027. Is there a way of moving it faster?
So there's, there's also another caveat that HCD doesn't allow you to take into account things like state density bonus laws. So in our downtown right now, if a project were to come in with over 50 rental units, they would be required to provide 20% affordable housing, per our affordable housing ordinance. That would automatically qualify them for state density bonus law, which would allow them to request a concession or waiver for the building height requirements. So there's actually already a way for them to get that, but HCD doesn't allow you to count that.
Twenty percent, right?
What's that?
We already require the 20%. So to me, that, it means that everybody would be getting this waiver, right?
They can qualify, yes.
Because we don't, we, okay, they can qualify, right? And then, the parking, the floors, the, oh, you had, I was fascinated by the whole low-income affluent areas. That was really kind of crazy to me. So you're, in your maps, there's no low-income areas in Watsonville? Is that, I didn't understand what you were trying to get at when you were saying you were dividing.
You gotta remember, this is by, you know, it's not as granular as if we did a survey really on the local level. They're looking at sort of census tract level data through these data viewers in terms of concentrations of areas of affluence and poverty. And so while there may be some hyper-local concentrations, that kind of stuff doesn't show up on, on the level of, you know, census tracts. And so that's why overall, our whole community was shown as low-income, but we didn't have any of those pockets of the excessively low, you know, poverty levels or high poverty levels.
Right, okay. So can you explain to me how our, I guess, community was low-income, but there weren't pockets of low-income areas?
The two maps that, that Matt showed were, are there, are there specific areas of the city that are low-income? And then are there specific areas of the city that are affluent, that are segregated from each other? What the surveys found is that the entire city generally is considered low-income. There are no discrete pockets of poverty anywhere. And there's no discrete pockets of affluence. Like, there's not, oh, that's the rich area and that's the poor area. It's just all very similar in demographics.
Thank you for that explanation. I now understand. And so it's not saying that we have poverty. It's just saying that we're, we, if we were considered low-income, it's just uniformed, uniform across the whole community.
Correct, correct.
Thank you.
And it's interesting, if you look at some of these maps for more dense, you know, bigger city areas where the census tracts are a bit smaller, you really do see more of like a checkerboard pattern where you, where there are concentrated areas of poverty and affluence. But just at the level, you know, what we have in terms of, of density here in Watsonville and, you know, the size of our community, it just doesn't, this is the problem with that one-size-fits-all approach, is that that doesn't really show what they're trying to find in this size of community.
And you were saying that, what are RENA numbers that we need to hit this year? Or this, over the next?
2,053.
2,053 by what year?
2031.
2031? And with what we have in the books right now, where are we, how are we looking?
I mean, we have several hundred.
Several hundred?
Pipeline already, so, yeah.
So that means just only 1,800 more to go? Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, if you look at what's happening in downtown Santa Cruz, which I think we would probably like to try to emulate, you know, by way of our downtown specific plan, they happen a couple, you know, 100 or 200 at a time. I was just talking, I was just at a zoning overview for somebody today for a site down there that had a max with, if they did 100% density bonus, 100% affordable for an 80% density bonus was going to be 281 units. So, you know, it can happen fast if the right projects come through.
And the new one on Main Street, is that going to be considered towards the new RENA numbers? Or, or is it, since it was permitted a while ago, does that go towards old numbers?
Are you talking about 558?
Hanson.
It's new numbers.
New numbers, so that plus both of them, you said, behind Target, then the ones off of the Habitat for Humanity. So we're rocking and rolling.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot in the pipeline. Even the Sparrow Terrace is going to be.
Oh, okay.
Right? Yeah, because it's, it's not completed yet.
Oh, so we're hitting, we're hitting some really good numbers then, already off the bat. Okay, thank you guys for your work.
Any other questions? Councilmember Salsedo?
Could you go back to the RENA number page, how, that calculation, or the one before?
The big one or the little one?
Little one is good. You mentioned a change in formula. Could you just describe that a little bit more? Like, I mean, what percentage increase was this from our fifth to sixth cycle again?
Suzy might be able to speak to the fifth cycle a little bit better about the, are you talking about the breakdown?
No, just the, the percentage increase. You said it was like 150, it's like a large amount, percentage more.
Yeah, our, our.
193%.
193% from the fifth to the sixth cycle, wow. So. So general, I, I don't need the specifics, I don't, you know, I barely pass stats, just why did this change?
Got it, absolutely. So on the, on the fifth cycle, they, and, and previous cycles, all they were looking at was future need. What they looked at in this cycle is not just future need for housing, which probably would be around maybe 700. They also looked at current need and, and past. So they're, they're looking at all of the, the built-up or the pent-up demand. And so that is why everyone's numbers jumped significantly. Another piece with this area's cycle in the, in the methodology, I know Matt talked about how they split up the income levels, but the reason that our, our northern North County, our cities and county got significantly more numbers as well is that for the first time, the, the distribution also factored in where the jobs were. So they're trying to address the fact that so many people get on the freeway every day and drive elsewhere for work. And so Watsonville, it's interesting, because Watsonville's, was it the fifth cycle? No, it was the fourth cycle, I think, the housing element. We had about 2,000 units in that cycle as well. And then the, the recession hit, and it was, it was scaled back down. So maybe it was the fifth cycle, I, I can't remember, but it, it went from, what? It was the fourth cycle. And, and so it was scaled back down to 700, but now it, it's back up to 2,000. So I think, yeah, we did pretty good on that.
So if we were particularly good in one area, like low-income and moderate, but we hadn't done enough hypothetically for very low income or above moderate income, those numbers of subsets would be higher for the next calculation. Is that?
Exactly, yeah. You got it.
Thank you.
You passed.
Other questions or comments from council? All right, seeing none, I'll take it out to the public. If the public would like to comment on this item, please come to the podium, and please state your name and your district for the record. Welcome.
Welcome, and thank you. My name is Becky Steinbrenner. I live in rural Aptos, but I'm very interested in, in what is happening in Watsonville. I have a lot of friends here. I'd like to just add to the analysis of the sixth district, or sixth, sixth cycle arena numbers. A couple of years ago, the State Department of Finance did do an audit of the methodology that HCD used and determined that they didn't have the best data, and the models that they used were not really that great. HCD acknowledged that, but said, "We're not going to do anything about it until the next cycle." So they're not going to change it. So I just wanted to encourage you to look into that audit and keep that in mind. I, I want to, I'm a little concerned, I'm very concerned about the, the height of buildings, especially in the downtown area. In a couple of days, we're going to mark the 35th anniversary of the Loma Prieta earthquake, and I remember what the downtown area looked like. And to me, thinking of having eight-story buildings on soils that are likely prone to liquefaction in large seismic events, I think is very concerning and is, could be a public safety hazard. It's always said that anything can be engineered, but I don't trust that, and it also would drive up significantly the cost of building such structures. I want to ask why the lot, the very large lot on the corner of Freedom Boulevard and Crestview is not included. I'm aware that I think the county owns that, but I'd like to see some movement to.
Thank you.
All right, let me just add that.
Thank you.
The airport needs.
Your time is past, thank you. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Yasenia, District 7. It was really cool to read this. I didn't read the whole thing, I'll be honest. I did read the county's one entirely, but, you know, can't read all of the housing elements, it's way too much. I want to thank like Matt for always sending out the emails to like give a chance to give public comment. Again, I think I only gave a comment the first time, but life is overwhelming sometimes. And I know that HCD puts a lot of pressure to like get certain numbers up, so it's really cool to learn about the affirmative and fair housing stuff and compare that to like the counties and how they're splitting up more housing, more low-income housing up in North County, so we can finally start to get more of a balance. And I just want to say I'm in support of like the larger buildings. I hear Jimmy's concerns about parking, so if there's a way for you guys to start advocating for there to be more money going to the metro, I look at like all the money that's being spent to add another lane, and it's driving me nuts, because I feel like that money could have all been like free bus fare for like everyone. Free buses for the youth was shown to increase ridership, and it would have been cool if that would have just been countywide for everyone, not just the youth. Because if we are going to start building up and be more densely packed, we need a better transportation system, but I'm pretty happy with the housing element. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing no one else from the public, I'll bring it back to council. I would like to make a motion to approve this item.
I'll second.
If I may, Mayor, can, can we just clarification on the motion that that includes the modifications that staff requested in the staff report and outlined in the presentation? The program D-8 and D-13, correct?
Do you want me to read the motion, or I'll be okay?
If, if that's acceptable, and, and if your motion was meant to include those things, then that's, that's great. Thank you. And if the second or can just indicate that they too agree with that.
I also agree.
I have some questions. Thanks.
Council member Dutra?
Or, or comments as well. So I think that, you know, in regard to the tall buildings, I understand what you're saying. I grew, I grew up here, I remember it, before the earthquake as well. The voters went to the ballot box and they, they drew our urban limit lines, and we can't move out of it. And so in order to meet a lot of these numbers, the only way we can do it is by going up, unfortunately. The voters did not side with letting us expand at all. So it makes it very difficult how we're going to be able to find these numbers if we don't go up. And then I also wanted to say that I agree with, with Metro, would love to get more ridership. It's shown that with the free rides, the youth are taking advantage of it. We sit on the same board, Vanessa and I, we are headed towards a fiscal cliff, so I know that there's going to be a lot of cuts, and, unless we start working on a way to increase our budget at Metro. So that's something over the next few years, it's going to be very concerning for all of us. And then I, I just had a question in regard to, so the very low, is that, how much is that a year? 80,000 was that? How, what's very low, low, moderate income? What are, what are the cutoffs? Because I talk about this stuff all the time out when I'm in the public in general, and I saw, I just, I remember one number being 80,000 a year. Was that very low or low?
Probably very low.
Depends on the category. Thank you, Carlos Landaverri, housing manager. Thank you for your question. So for one person?
Yes, one person.
If you make less than 5,000 a month, you would be very low income.
$60,000 a year.
Yes, it's about 63, around there.
63,000.
So the way I present it to people is 5,000 a month, very low for one person. But on the low-income category, in order to qualify for most housing programs, a family of four can make up to $143,000 a year and be low-income.
That is so crazy to me.
Right.
I, it just, okay. And then what's moderate? Moderate must be way, much higher than.
Correct.
You know, and off by the top.
Moderate is 158,000.
Oh, so it's not that big of a difference.
It's not. So the way the calculation works, so for example, median income for a family of four, median, median 100%, that's 132,000. And so low income, which is 80%, is actually higher. And the reason why that happens is that the way the federal government looks at the numbers, they start with the 50%, and then they can add certain factors. And when they compute that in, in high-cost areas, 80% can be higher than 100%. And that's the case right now in our county, which is the least affordable in the entire country, and other counties like Los Angeles. And so median is 132, moderate, it's taken exact, it's from the 100%. And so moderate and above moderate are based on 100%. But very low income, 50%, 60%, and 80%, they're based on 50% of the median income. And then they add certain factors, and that gives us a higher number.
So if you're.
So I know it can be very confusing.
But if you're a teacher, and you're one person, you're already qualifying, because I know we don't start our teachers off at $63,000 a year.
Correct. So last year, I looked at the numbers for the school district and for city employees, and the vast majority would qualify for our housing programs.
Need to get them in there. Well, I, I'm a big supporter of workhouse forcing, workhouse, workforce housing. It's been a long day. That's a tongue twister. So I think that, you know, this is good information to have, and as we move forward, I really want to get our teachers and our city staff members and, you know, people who are, you know, in the jobs, our bus drivers that are making, that are falling into this area, the opportunity to stay here, because a lot of times, they're living far away, Los Baños. There are teachers living in Los Baños that are driving in every day to teach. So I feel like we need to make sure that we're taking care of the people who are contributing to our communities. So, thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
All right, any comments, questions from council? We had a motion on the floor, on the floor, and a second. Can I have a roll call, please?
Dutra?
Aye.
Luroscu?
Aye.
Salsido?
Aye.
Gidos Carter?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you very much for that presentation. With that, we do not have any emergency items added to the agenda, and so with that, I will go ahead and adjourn.